Okay, everybody did cry, we're gonna get started. I'd like to welcome all of you here. It's so great to see you. This is our first Conifer Area Council Town Hall meeting for the school year. We have quarterly town halls starting in September, then we'll have one in November, February, and April. So we hope you can come to all four. I'd like to issue a special thanks to Sharon Trill with My Mountain Town. She's videotaping this. This will be on her website, and you can see that at the bottom of your agenda. So please, you know, go there, and she has all kinds of fabulous information. She's now videotaping the meeting tonight. She is our sponsor, and so we really thank her for her community support for tonight's Conifer Area Council Town Hall meetings. So, if everybody would like a clap, that would be great. I'm thinking we might have a few faces that have not been here before. And I'd like to just talk a little bit about Conifer Area Council. We are a non-political organization that does not support or oppose any development, issue, political agenda, individual person, or business. We've asked all of our speakers to include these values in their presentations, and to be non-partisan, non-controversial, and to present us the facts. So we've also asked our speakers, and now I'm asking all of you as members of the audience, not to campaign for any person or issue while in this meeting. Okay? And there, as all of our meetings, there will be no questions or comments during the presentations, but we will have an open house format starting at 8 o'clock. And at that point, you can go up to any of the speakers. The Sheriff's Department is here, a lot of people to talk to, and you can go up and ask questions, you know, give them comments, whatever you'd like to do in that point. So what is going on around here? You know, at my house, we received some very needed moisture in the last week. And it is hard for me to even imagine the devastation all around us. But Steve Harrelson, our representative from C-DOT, is right in the middle of the devastation. He's trying to figure out how to get roads and bridges passable again, and was unable to make it tonight. So he felt really bad. He wanted to apologize to you all, because he's in all of our meetings. But he wanted to let you know that he will be at our November meeting, and he'll give a really good update at that point. Bruce Daley, who is our RTD representative, was also unable to make it tonight, but he will be here in November also. However, Dawn Smith, she's the director of the Conifer Area Chamber of Commerce, she is here, and she's gonna talk a little bit about the new programs. You are too kind. Hey, I have Conifer Souvenirs with me tonight. Remember how you voted for slogans? Well, I have only one natural high Conifer Colorado t-shirt left. I do have several Elevate Your Life Conifer Colorado t-shirts that you'd like. And that was just fun. And the third t-shirt that will be made will say 8,278 Feet Closer to Heaven, Conifer Colorado. So come see me. I also have brand-new Highway 285 foothills adventure maps. So that includes all the fun things to do between C-470 and 285, all the way to Jefferson City, almost a fair place. So if you're new in the area, please come by. And I also have other information in the Chamber office. So come on by if you're newly relocated. Next Thursday, if I have any beer drinkers in the room, is our fourth annual Conifer Activia Fest. That's Activia Fest. And it's at Brook Place from 4:30 to 7:30. And it's ironically a scholarship fundraiser for our high school scholarship fund. So come on out. 25 breweries over 50 cracked beers. And Stan Fox, wave your hand. Stan Fox has tickets on sale discounted $5 off each tonight. So see Stan Fox. Also, mark your calendars for 23rd November. That's our 14th annual wine tasting. It includes a silent auction, food, desserts, and also new this year to this event, the Festival of Trees. So you can bin on a pre-decorated Christmas tree, take it home with you. We'll even mail that tree home for you if you need to. And it's also a fundraiser for our scholarship funds. I know it's a little early to think about the Christmas and holiday season, but just in case, December 7th is our 31st annual Conifer Christmas Parade. This year's theme is a Storytime Christmas. Got some fans in the room for the parade, it's a good thing. We also will have markets that day too, so please mark your calendar for December 7th at 1:30 our parade will start. And if you're looking for a way to help people affected by this 500-year flood, basically, there's a fundraiser going on right now on Channel 6, that's our PBS station. And all the media outlets are focusing and having them do a fund drive, because as you know, PBS and NPR and those folks know how to do a pledge drive. But this one will help flood victims affected in our area. And I'll try to keep you posted as well as how we can help our sister town, downtown Evergreen, that was affected also, as well as some of the residents along Upper Bear Creek, et cetera. I hope to have a chance to talk with you after the presentation. Come see me. Free maps, t-shirts at a great price. And thank you again for shopping locally. Thank you, Dawn. Some exciting things going on. Okay, next I have Erica Armstrong. Is it still Armstrong, Erica? Okay, just kinda got married. Okay, so Erica is a board member for Conifer Area Council, and she's gonna talk about some of the developments going on, you've got that on your, you know, hooked to your agenda, but also a little bit about Connect for Colorado. Erica?
Hello. So on the back of your town hall meeting page is a list of all the developments that are going on in the community. It's actually pretty quiet right now, I know the economy's recovering, but the businesses are still holding their breaths. So the only changes we have on here are pretty minor. There's some commercial development changes. The trail dusters on 285, they're asking for churches and their facilities. Donna Shaker's asking about the fish pond, they're asking to develop a campground down there. There's a couple residential developments that are very minor. The only other addition I have on here is different, about the Connect for Colorado. So it's Connect for Colorado, the new insurance marketplace for individuals to buy health insurance at usable rates, will open on October 1st. It's a brand-new way to buy insurance, and most existing health plans, they brought in a Montcalm plan, and from Kaiser, are offering a variety of different levels of coverage. We have more information on the brochure, the brochure to go back there, but the Mount Resource Center is gonna be a source of information and help for this new program. They said to give them a couple more weeks before they will actually take appointments, but if you call them up, they will sit down with you and walk you through the whole entire plan. So if you give them a call, they'll walk you through that, and that's all I have for tonight.
Wow. Thank you, Erica. And next we have Brian Mosby. Brian is the Patron Experience Supervisor, is that right? New title, Patron Experience Supervisor for the Conifer Library. And he's talked just a little bit about what's going on at the library.
Thank you. Good evening. I just have a couple of quick announcements about the library. I did wanna say a big thank you to the community. We've got a Lego Club going this weekend, this summer, and it's been a huge success. So the donations, the support, the parents bringing in the kids, it's really worked well, so well, that they've asked me to continue it. So I do have new dates up until December, and we're going to continue the Lego Club once a month into 2014. So we were getting about 60 people showing up each time in the summer ones, we're now getting about 35, which is still great. So we have a young one, toddlers up to about eighth grade, they come out, build some incredible things, we put them in our display case so everybody can see them. This Saturday, we have a high-altitude baking program. So if you're interested in all those problems that you might have making at these high altitudes, Randy Levine is going to be there, she's our high-altitude baking specialist. She's written a couple of books on the subject, she's quite a character, should be very lively, and she promises great treats. And a couple of other reminders, don't forget baby time, it's 11 o'clock Saturdays, storytime at 11:30 for older kids, 2 to 5. And then we do have a book club now for adults. It is the last Tuesday of each month, we try and keep the books, the kind of award-winning books. We will be having that next Tuesday on the 24th, and again in October 11th. Don't forget, we do have downloadable books on our site, if you need help with that, we're keeping up with technology, we're learning fast how to do that. Thank you.
We are going to mix it up just a tiny bit. We're gonna go ahead and get an update regarding the Conifer Recreation Coalition. Tiki Nemtak is here to give you that update. Tiki. Conifer Recreation Coalition. So who is this group? I'm gonna play two roles here, so bear with me, please I script the slides. We are introducing now a program, we've been working on this for about a year, and right now we're introducing a brand-new program, it's called... It's called, hang on. It's called PLACE. So find a place in the Conifer area. PLACE stands for Public Lands, Activities, Communities, and Experiences. What exactly is recreation in the Conifer area? First, I always start my discussions by making it abundantly clear, this is not about a rec district. So those of you who have your hackles up can put them down, because we're not even having that discussion, that is not what this is about. So what is it? What is recreation in Conifer? It's trails, facilities, historic places, local events, and our abundance about the recreation opportunities. So just a little bit about this, who is Conifer Recreation? It's a group of citizens and organizations that came together to discuss amazing recreational assets and opportunities in the area. So this fall, as I mentioned, we're rolling out this new program, it's called Project So what is Project PLACE? It's a citizen initiative, it is, this is where I have to refer my notes. It's a citizen initiative that studies the recreational resources of the area, and develops strategies for improving the assets and opportunities, and enhancing promotion and packaging of These are what we hope that we can offer to residents, people who are traveling through. Project PLACE will assist recreation, current recreation providers, and with opportunities to coordinate their effort, create mutually beneficial relationships. It's a master plan, is what it is. And it's to serve as a platform for existing groups to use in finding their funding. I'm gonna find out more. We're on Facebook, Conifer Rec, look it up. We're also on Twitter, it's @ConiferRec. Or you can email us at conquercoalition@gmail.com. So here's what we're looking for right now. We want and need as much community involvement as we can muster. We're gonna be meeting three times in public forum meetings throughout the course of this project, and the course of developing this master plan. We're asking for your help. We want help in compiling a list of what's special, and what's fun to do in the Conifer area. We want great pictures, we wanna know what your favorite picnic areas are, we want sunset views in your pictures, we wanna know where you go for bike rides, we want to know trails that you think that your neighbors would enjoy, or if you're out of town, yes. This is how I think of it, when my out-of-town guests come in town, what do I, what do I tell them? What do we do? Those are the kind of things that we need feedback from you. The Conifer Recreation Coalition's objective with the Project PLACE is to identify what people really want in terms of recreational experiences, and then to develop strategies for improving upon what we already have. So let's get involved. Sign up, come on over, sign up, give me your email list, and as we develop this plan, you'll be able to see how things roll out, and you'll have a say in it. Again, we want you to send us your pictures, and if there's anything you'd like to share, please just send them to conquercoalition@gmail.com. Stay in touch with us, hit our Facebook page, like us, and you'll see, as things develop, exactly what's going on with this. Thanks, Tiki. Okay, now we're gonna go back to Jefferson County Public Schools. As you probably all know, there are school board elections coming up, and legislative information will be here tonight. We have six candidates that are running for the school board, all were invited tonight. There were only two, well, kinda one and a half are here so far, we've got another one coming. But if you would come up at this point, we're just going to introduce them, they're not going to be campaigning, speaking, or anything tonight. The school board candidates are Tanya Altman Betridge, she will not be here tonight, Julie Williams will not be here, but she is being represented by Donna Jack, right here. And then we have Jeff LaMontagne, okay, right here. John Newkirk, I believe, will be here a little bit later. Then we also have Gordon Spud Van De Waard and Ken Witt. Now, the candidates will be out in the lobby area during the open house, they will not be campaigning, but if you wanna go up to them, get literature from them, talk to them, anything, you are certainly welcome to do so. Okay? Just, thank you very much. And now, I would like to introduce Wendy Woodland, she's not totally new to the area, she's been at the West Jefferson Elementary School for three years, is that correct? This is her third year. But we've never had her at one of our town hall meetings, and we wanted to make sure that all of you here tonight have got to meet her. So this is Wendy. So how about a round of applause for our host of the evening. And Wendy's gonna talk for just a couple minutes regarding the legislation that is happening regarding schools, and she's going to just talk about the facts. Wendy?
Hello, thanks for everyone for being here, and thanks for the Conifer Area Council for putting this together. I am the principal at West Jeff Elementary, and for those of you who, I know there's a lot going on in schools, and you might not know what's going on in schools, I might even give me a call, set up a visit, come and see what we're doing, there are great things happening in schools, and I'd love for you to have a chance to see them, this is your personal invitation. Okay. I am going to talk about Amendment 66, these are facts, and I just want to tell everyone on the back table, there is a form that I printed off of the internet, full disclosure, it is off of the website that does support this, I just want you to know, and it talks about what you would pay, and what we'd be able to, again, do your own research on it, I just, that was the only place I could find some of those things. Amendment 66 is a, I'm just gonna kinda read to you, I'm sorry, but give you an idea. It's a voter-initiated ballot measure to provide funding for pre-K through 12 education. It will, it's also been known as Initiative 22 in Colorado Commits to Kids, and it will fund Senate Bill 213 that you may have heard of, also called the Future School Finance Act of 2013. If passed, the following things will be funded in schools in 2015 and 16, preschool for at-risk 3-, 4-, and 5-year-olds, full-day kindergarten for all students, more funding for our gifted and talented programs, more funding for at-risk English language learners, funding to cover federally mandated special education, which is now being covered through general fund in most school districts. It will provide $441 per student in Jefferson County's public schools, it's different for all school districts across the state, to implement some unfunded legislative requirements around accountability, the educator effectiveness, which is teacher evaluations every year for every teacher, and the READ Act, which is about making sure all of our students are reading at grade level by 3rd grade, Common Core, which I'm sure you've heard about, and new online assessments, and any other mandates that are being funded through general fund. Overtime revenues increase, as they increase, the $441 will be increased to $600 per student, I hope you've got all this right. Special education funding will increase, charter schools will have access to capital construction dollars from the state, as well as increases in per-student funding passed through the district. And Amendment 66 will generate about $1 billion, which can only be invested in education. Jefferson County public schools will see anywhere between $72 million and $105 million per year over time. Revenues are generated through a tiered tax, which means you pay a certain rate on the first portion, up to $75,000, and an additional rate above that. We'll look into that, I'm not 100% clear on that myself, sorry to say. Individuals currently earning $75,000 or under will see an increase of .37% in state income tax. Individuals earning over $75,000 will see the same 3.37% for that, $75,000, and then on the additional 1.27%. So it is an income tax there. Amendment 66, I'm watching Angela for time, okay. It supersedes other tax reforms, and it would remove an automatic cost of living provision from law. It also exempts any new income generated from Tabor refund limits. If Amendment 66 passes, 43% of the state's general fund will be designated for pre-K through 12 investment. Under the new Finance Act, there will be a return on investments report, more principal control and reporting on spending, and higher accountability and transparency requirements. And the last part here is, if it passes, revenues collected before July 1st, 2015 will be reserved as follows. 40% to the pre-K through 12 Reserve Fund, 15% to Educator Effectiveness Reserve Fund, 5% to the Education Technology Reserve Fund, 40% for capital construction assistance, and to help make sure all schools can support kindergarten for all students. So, again, just so you know, it doesn't say it at the top, but this is the form that I did get off the website, if you have more questions, and like all things, I would encourage you to do your own research on that.
Thanks, Wendy, and welcome. Okay, the girls at West Jefferson Elementary are doing some really fun things right now. It's called Girls on the Run. Ann Pointe and a couple of others are going to be talking about that, so, Ann.
We were so excited to be invited to talk about a very positive, impacting program at West Jeff Elementary. Myself and my fellow coach Heather Malcolm, along with two other wonderful ladies, are coaching a group of wonderful girls for Girls on the Run. Girls on the Run is a national program that was started back on the East Coast by a gal who was a social worker in a school. And it really isn't a running club, it uses running as a backdrop. It's really about empowering girls to have confidence and make healthy choices in their life. It's a program that starts in grade 3 and goes all the way up through grade 8. This year is our second year, we have 22 wonderful little girls who are so excited, and are coming out and practicing with us twice a week, and will be getting ready to run a 5K race at the end of, I guess in the middle of November. So it's pretty exciting. So I'm Heather Malcolm, I'm a school social worker at West Jeff Elementary.
I'm Samara.
What grade are you in?
3rd grade.
So Samara is in 3rd grade, and her sister is in 5th grade. So she was kind of a Girls on the Run in training last year, tagging along with mom and older sister Chloe. Tell us how many races you've won, or won, walked and ran. And actually, I'm remembering a third one. So our team, last year, I just thought of a third one. So last year in the fall, part of the Girls on the Run curriculum is to do a service project. So we talked with the girls about giving back to the community, and trying to keep it really local. Because we're a running group, we really felt like Emily's run would be a great run for us to participate in. I live in Bailey, and so, of course, with all of us, we know that that event really touched all of us. Her parents, and the I Love You Guys Foundation, really created an amazing foundation that supports our local, our local community, Step 13, it's the Mount Resource Center, the Peace Shelter, a variety of places, organ and tissue donation, scholarships at Columbine and at Black Canyon High School, they just do amazing work. The major thing that I have really been impressed by is John Michael Key's work with the Columbine Symposium and school safety, and the SRP, the School Response Protocol, that all schools now in Jeffco utilize, and it really has tightened up our sense of safety and security, and taught children what to do in a case of an emergency. And so we really, that has been a very valuable thing for all of our schools. And so, last year we did kind of a spirit week, and kids could bring money to wear a hat in honor of Emily, and we raised $160. We had many families join us for the race, and we made a lot of money that way. We're doing that again this year, and then we participated in the elevation race, and then we do our Girls on the Run race at the end of the fall, and in May. So it's been a huge goal that many of our girls have made about being able to run a 5K.
How exciting. I wish my daughter could have been involved in that when she was in elementary school. I mean, I hope you are as happy to hear about that as I am, and that's very cool. Okay, next we have Elk Creek Fire Department. Bill McLaughlin, Chief Bill McLaughlin, is gonna talk to us a little bit about what Elk Creek's been up to, and what you need to know for the election.
So I just wanted to talk a little bit about the information that you would need to know prior to the proposed mill levy that's coming up this fall. To start with, give you a little bit of background on how the fire district gets its funding. You know, a lot of folks I know are not aware that all of our funding is local, we don't get any funding from the county, or the state, or the federal government, except for the occasional grant. So our funding essentially is 75% property taxes, about 20% ambulance revenue from billing insurance for ambulance services, grants and donations make up a big chunk of what's left of there. Donations unfortunately are only about 1% of our total budget. And then, you know, just some miscellaneous income. I do know that there's been some discussion around the community about $200,000, or various numbers that have been thrown around, that was in excess of last year's budget, and to explain that, it's not actually shown in this, but last year, because of all the fires that we had around Colorado, we actually were reimbursed $236,000 for helping various other departments, or the fed, federal government, or the state on various fires. Of that, about $115,000 went to expenses such as personnel and other things, which left actually a fairly good amount of money that was reimbursed to us for the equipment that we used, to go into our equipment replacement fund. So in that respect, last year was actually a pretty solid budget year for So in that respect, last year was actually a pretty solid budget year for Elk Creek, but that was primarily because we spent a lot of the year fighting fires. If we look just at the tax revenue for Elk Creek Fire, you can see that over the past several years, the tax revenues have dropped about 16%. And we have the assessment for 2014, 2015 and it's a 4% decrease from this year. So what we're seeing is, you know, much, much tighter budget as we move forward. To deal with those budget cuts that we've had to make, we've been scaling back the services that the fire department has available. In the last year, we cut two and a half out of 12 positions, which included our fire marshal and our training officer. We cut the cost of benefits to our firefighters. We've sold several of our vehicles. We've done a lot of cuts that I know wasn't really popular when I told the crews they couldn't have coffee anymore, but you know, that's what you gotta do. And we've started to use what reserves we have. And at this point, we have basically, you know, spent as much out of our reserves as we can safely do. This unfortunately is really bad timing for that because in next year, every 10 years, the fire department is graded on our capability. And that grading is used to essentially set your fire insurance rates. And so this is terrible timing for that because a lot of those cuts unfortunately are going to impact how that grading is done. Grading goes from a class one to a class 10. Elk Creek has had an outstanding rating, the best in the area up until now, at a class Basically homeowners are paying about 20% less than they would be if, you know, in some of the other departments that don't have that class five rating. It's going to be very difficult for us to keep that class five moving into next year for a number of reasons. One of them is that out of four engines, one of them is not going to be counted anymore because it's reached the maximum life that they will consider a fire engine as being qualified. So once it hits 25 years, they just write it off and so essentially they're going to say, you know, that fire engine and the two water trucks are not applicable to our grading. Likewise, the cuts that we made unfortunately are also going to impact that grading. You know, one of the things that they measure is, you know, whether we have a full-time training officer, how much hours the firefighters put in training, whether we have a full-time fire prevention officer. And unfortunately, each of those things that we've had to cut is going to impact that insurance rating. So the board, looking at this, has elected to go ahead and put a mill levy proposition on the ballot. The current mill levy is 4.91 mils and has been since Tabor was enacted in 1992. So there's not been a tax increase since it was first required that it be approved by voters. That mill levy is the lowest in either Parker or Jefferson County quite a lot. Currently, you know, at 4.9 mils, the owner of a $300,000 house pays about $117 a year, so it's a very small part of the tax bill that you get each year as compared with, for example, if you live down in Lakewood where you're paying about $328. Under the proposed increase, the mill levy for Elk Creek would still be the lowest in either Jefferson or Park County. And it would be about $176 for a $300,000 house. So essentially for a $300,000 house, the increase would be about $60 a year or $4.98 a month. The money would go to basically restoring one of the positions. So what we are proposing to do would be to have one assistant chief who would be the training officer and the fire marshal. We would not restore all of the positions that we cut. And we would immediately replace those old, the 25-year-old trucks so that we would be able to qualify them next year for the insurance regrading. One of the other big things that we'd be looking at doing is funding protective gear for volunteers. You know, while we have cut a couple of the paid positions, at the same time, we now have more volunteers than we've had in many years and we have a lot more people in the community who would like to volunteer. Unfortunately, you know, even volunteers aren't free. We have to have the equipment issued to them. We have to provide them the training and we have to fund the pension program for them, you know, in order to take them on. So at this point, you know, we have a good number of volunteers and we're not taking any new applications. It's a good thing for us, you know, in that we have good staffing, but we would like to get more volunteers as well, especially to make up the difference in the other position, the full-time position that we cut. And then finally, we would be looking at both building up a fund to continue replacing apparatus. As I mentioned, we've had to cut the reserve that we normally would use for purchasing apparatus and also to maintain our buildings. And we need to replenish that so that we don't end up in the same situation a couple of years down the road when the next few fire engines start reaching the end of their life. So again, that position that we would be restoring would be half fire marshal, half training position. So it'd be filling the two positions just in one person. And the primary job that that person has is recruiting and training the volunteers. That's pretty much what we want to do. The other big thing with that is that again, it would help that insurance rating to have that position back on. With this plan, we're also looking at, you know, streamlining our operations. You know, when I started with Elk Creek, we had 24 different fire engines and trucks and everything. And that's a lot. It's a lot of maintenance costs, a lot of insurance costs. So as we're moving forward with this, we're also working, you know, moving to a more efficient model. One of those is that instead of having, you know, a big structure engine, a city engine and a brush truck at every station, that combined costs about $750,000. We're going to look at replacing those with a single mid-size truck that would essentially cost half that amount. So as we move forward, you know, what I want to do is cut the overall cost for us to maintain, you know, right now we've got about $4 million replacement cost in all the fire engines. I want to cut that down to about $3 million and then we would have less issue with trying to maintain and replace those apparatuses as we move forward. Another rumor that's gone around town has been that this bill levy proposal would be to add union firefighters. We're not looking at adding any positions that would be eligible for the union. That training officer as a chief officer would not be eligible. And then secondly, you know, in the state of Colorado, the only way for a union to exist in a fire department is if 50% of the residents of the fire district vote to allow them to have collective bargaining. So while our firefighters belong to the International Association of Firefighters, they do not have a union contract, they do not have any of the bargaining abilities that city firefighters do. We would be adding more volunteers. We'd be looking at, you know, the protective clothing and training that we need, you know, to get those volunteers on board. Okay? And that's pretty much what I've got to talk about.
And now Jennifer with Creekside Insurance is going to take just a minute or two to talk about what the impact of the election would be on your insurance. Jennifer?
Thank you. I promise I'll be your quickest speaker ever tonight. I'm just here to reiterate exactly what she said. I actually am a local insurance agent. I have great relationships with my colleagues in the community as well. So I can speak from the many companies that I represent as well as many of the single company agents like State Farm, Allstate, American Family. Many of you may have already known this, but insurance is getting increasingly difficult to purchase up here and I can truly tell you, it is a fact. If we lose our fire rating here, your insurance rates will go up. That is not in dispute by any stretch. Insurance companies are getting very sophisticated. They're looking at how close you are to brush fire. So I do want to dispel one myth. There's a myth out there that when my insurance company doesn't look at my ISO rating, they don't care if I'm a one or a 10. They look at a brush hazard map. I can tell you part of that mapping includes your protection classes. It includes how quickly the fire department can respond, what their access to water is. So I encourage you to call your agents and ask them, what would happen if I lose my rating? They can give you the information in particular to your policy, but I can truly tell you, no matter how your company looks at it, they're also, like I said, looking at how close you are to brush fire. It is so sophisticated now that they can GPS down and see if you are 500 feet to a thick wooded area, are you 1,000 feet? They will look at that, they'll take into account what your ISO protection classes, and they'll also look at how many trees are around your house, may ask you to cut trees down. So it is going to be difficult, not impossible, but the rates will change. The rates will change if we lose our rating. So we need to keep our department strong, we need to keep them with good equipment, as Chief said. And like I said before, call your agents. They can give you a little bit more specific information and probably confirm what you're hearing tonight. So I thank you very much. And I'll be here afterwards, so if you have any general questions about insurance, don't hesitate to come up to me, I'll stay after the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thanks Jennifer. Some of you may have been wondering what that big chair's doing in the middle. And there's a lot of other things going on. Portland Coffee is here to talk a little bit about some of the things that Journey Church has been up to.
All right. And I'm actually, what we plan to do here is actually show a short video that kind of gives a broad scope of several things that are going on at Journey Church, just to kind of give the broadest update. And if people have specific questions about something specific afterwards, I will try to answer those as best I can.
Do you want to light a candle now?
Yeah, good. I actually, we actually don't know if this is going to work, so everyone props their fingers. We didn't get here in time to test. So what this is, is we're working on a video project for our five-year anniversary. We're about to be five years old as a church here in Conifer. And so we've been putting a video together and this is not quite complete. It was, it's in its rough stage. But like I said, it just kind of gives the best broad scope of what's going on here. I also unfortunately don't have a hookup for audio, so we're going to try to run it through these speakers and we'll put this mic up to it and we're going to see how it works, all right? So everyone's going to bear with me here as we have an adventure with technology. All right? The goal for us at Journey Church over the last five years has been to be a group of people passionate about serving our community and not simply asking the people to attend our services. With this mindset, we have launched the Journey Project, like Angry Loma Dine, which serves breakfast and lunch to hundreds of community members every week. All the money from the Angry Loma goes to support our student program, serving kids in all our rural communities. Two years ago, we launched the Mountain Road Driving School, which is a state credited, fully certified driving school supplying driver's education and behind-the-wheel training to hundreds of students since the beginning. Mountain Road Driving School is run by journey staff, volunteers, and has been able to scholarship dozens of students through their program thanks to the generosity of our members. We are currently opening a second location in Evergreen area. We'll soon be franchising the school to churches and nonprofits all over the country who are looking to duplicate what has been done. All proceeds from the Mountain Road Driving School go to fund our student programs in our community. Just this last year, we launched a new Journey Project called First Punch Graphics Marketing. We've opened up our design departments through this venture to be developing and marketing and designing for businesses and organizations both locally here in Colorado and nationwide. As part of this project, we do full-service, large format printing of everything from signs and banners to billboards and car wraps. A part of First Punch Graphics is our screen printing company, printing custom t-shirts for our schools, clubs, businesses, organizations, churches, and even more. The money from First Punch Graphics and marketing goes to help innovative churches get going all over the country. We've helped fund churches start here in Colorado, Denver, Colorado Springs, and Duell and nationwide in California, Michigan, Arkansas, Oregon. We've been able to help almost 30 churches in all states since our beginning. We started publishing and distributing books nationwide through our independent publishing company, First Punch Graphics. The publishing company is a way for us to tell our story and spread our message as well as to find and book great stories from around the nation. This year, we're releasing titles by authors like Michael Cheshire, Tony Barraro, Jonathan Rosedog, and Ford. We just recently opened two licensed U-Haul dealerships, serving Conifer and Evergreen. The U-Haul dealership has put us in proximity to newcomers in our community and give us the opportunity to meet them and offer any help we can to them getting plugged into our community. The U-Haul dealership will also help fund the Our Journey Helps Initiative. Journey Helps Ministry has been running since we opened our doors and to this day has helped thousands with the essential needs like food, clothing, and transportation. The Journey Food Bank is supplied by the donations of Journey Members and the Food Bank of the Rocks. We have supplied food to over 500 families over our five years and are about to launch a new food bank center that will be set up as a grocery store for those who use the food bank to shop and choose their items rather than being pre-assigned. At Journey, we believe there is dignity in choice and are excited to have this as an option for people in our city. In 2014, we are planning to launch a brand-new Helps Initiative facility where we will have dental and eye care suites to provide free care to low-income families. The Journey Car Ministry is a team of men and women coming together weekly to fix up cars and trucks for single moms and low-income families who are in desperate need of transportation. In our five years of existence, we've given over 100 cars away to provide transportation for those in need. Cars are donated by community members and fixed up by our cars team, replacement by our Helps Ministry. The Journey Response Team is made up of 226 men and women who have volunteered to be on call in the case of a natural disaster or a community emergency. The Response Team provides support and relief in the event of fires, snowstorm, and most recently flooding. We've worked closely with the Red Cross teams in the past fires, including the Lower Court Court Fire, where we supplied and served food with the evacuation center for the extent of the fire. This last year, we closed on the purchase of our close 50-acre acre piece of property overlooking Conifer High School right on the side of the street. We call it the Journey Ranch and it has all been cleaned up and returned in community use space. We developed over a mile of trails property which ties into the Conifer Trails Project, giving students a place to walk through our property from Conifer High School. We put in a disc golf course that is used daily by people in our community and even the Peking Flats at Conifer High School. And our fields in the front of the property are already being used as practice space for our local Little League football and lacrosse team. Our dream is to build a facility at the top part of this property that will serve as a rec center for our community and we're getting closer to that dream every week. Although still a year or two away, the Journey Rec Center will be a place for the community to gather, open to people with all walks of life, faiths, and backgrounds. We'll have the fitness rooms, three-fold gyms, movie theaters, a bowling alley, breakout tents, and more. We want the rec centers to be an asset for all of our community. This last summer, we started a new program called Journey Youth Board. Journey Youth Board was 35 high school students and college students that worked in 18 teacher gyms for Journey Church. They worked in all of our leadership and leadership development training and team building training across them. We saw these students grow and strive and become prominent influential leaders for their schools and their sibling, with the knowledge and experience to now only start and run businesses, but also the motivation to start something that makes an impact. We've been able to do quite a bit over the last five years, but know that the youth of our community is who will be moving us forward 10 to 15 years down the road. We're excited to see where we will be then. Until then, we'll keep holding on tight and inviting anyone who might feel a little daring to join with us. You can get connected with Journey Church by visiting us online at journeyfootills.com. We hope to see you around soon. And until then, remember, you matter to God and you matter to us.
Thank you, Portland. The Conifer Area Council Trails Team has been pretty busy also. And Suzie Nielsen, Conifer Area Council Board member, is going to talk a little bit about what they've been up to. Suzie?
Thank you, Shirley. It's been a great summer for us. The Conifer Area Council's Trail Team and Board would like to bring you up to date on the progress that we've made since our last Town Hall. The Trails Team, in partnership with Jefferson County, recently completed the Underpass Trail Link. It's in front of King Supers. You probably all recall that there was construction in the underpass in the early summer. Well, in the next few weeks, a pedestrian crosswalk will be painted on Conifer Road at its intersection with Davis Avenue, completing this project. The completion of the Underpass Trail allows easy passage to the south side of Aspen Park and a new entrance to Meyer Ranch, open space. The opening of this link was celebrated this summer with the first annual elevation celebration 5K that was put on by the Chamber. The Trails Team was approached by two young men who were on track to become Eagle Scouts. Well, both of these outstanding guys, leaders, completed their projects and added enormous contributions to the Trails project and the community. Patrick Riley, who was unable to be here tonight, one of the Eagle Scouts, completed a trail segment connecting the Conifer Area High School athletic fields with a neighboring trail on the Journey Church property. This connection allows Conifer High School track team members to run on trails through the woods between Conifer High School and Flying J Ranch rather than along Highway 73. Thank you, Patrick, for your efforts in working with the Trails Team and in building this essential community trail link. Thanks to the Journey Church's generosity for allowing and encouraging this connection with the community trails, benefiting the students as well as all of us who like to hike. The second Eagle Scout candidate is Cole Wagonhall's. Cole. Cole built the first Conifer Community Trails Trailhead sign and installed it at the entrance to the junior students' parking lot at Conifer High School. The high school administration allowed the lot to be designated Trailhead. Cole also built a bench along the new trail link. We're very grateful to Patrick and to Cole and to Conifer High School for these great additions to the Trails, and we're planning to help additional Eagle Scout projects and are working with two mountain area scout troops on trail maintenance. The focus for the rest of the year is to raise matching funds for the next trail segment. Trails was awarded the Conifer Newcomers and Neighbors Holiday Boutique Silent Auction, which will take place on November 2nd at Conifer High School. We are gathering donations, running the auctions, and using the proceeds for future trail development. We will very gratefully accept promises of donations tonight at the Trails table at the end of the meeting. In 2014, the Trails Team will begin working on connections between West Jeff Elementary and Conifer High School. Some parts of this route are set and others are also being determined right now. The goal is to have trails connecting the community so that it's possible to walk, hike, or bike from one part of Conifer to another. We're thrilled with progress being made and hope you enjoy a walk around town soon. And we welcome anyone who would like to join our Trails Team. We meet the fourth Wednesday of each month at 6:00 PM in the Conifer Library Meeting Room. Thank you.
Thank you, Susie, and thanks to Pat and to Patrick and to Cole. Wonderful job, that's great. Okay, now we have Light the Lights by Club, and Katie Bardejay is going to be talking about that, and she's also graciously worked the computer tonight. Technology is always iffy. We never know for sure what's going to work. They had work tonight. Thanks, Katie.
I had nothing to do with the Journey Church beautiful commercial that they had, so that was great. Thank you. I'm Katie Bardejay. I'm one of the vice presidents of the Conifer Lobos Unified Booster. It's a booster club at the high school, but it's, our focus is on all sports and all athletics, so we don't work with just one type of team or one type of activity, but we really try to focus on what the best overall help for the school could be, what they need, and how we can, how we can help. In the past, we've helped establish the Mountain Bowl with our neighboring Evergreen rivals, and we helped initiate homecoming at our, at our home field. It used to be that every homecoming was down at the Jeffco Stadium down in Lakewood, so we're happy that we can keep our, our families and our students up here for homecoming. We've helped with bleachers and fencing, and we provide concessions as a service, and we work with our parents to manage concession booths, or that's something that the club does, for all the sports that are offering concessions. So a few years ago, though, we realized that we can help out in a lot of little ways, but the biggest way we can help out is to try to keep like a, like a common goal between us, the administration, and the district, and our students. And in doing so, we came up with a master plan. We worked with the school district at Jeffco and the administration to come up with what the biggest needs were for the students, talked to coaches and parents. And one of the big things that had been talked about for a long time was lights, team rooms too, because if anybody's been to our main field, they realize that, you know, there's really nowhere for the students to go in bad weather, or the players, even younger students, the youth sports use those facilities as well. So some of those things, we have a multi-phased approach to our master plan. Our most important phases are our original phase one is lights at the main field, team rooms, and concession, and ticketing. And then the future phases would be track enhancements and some additional practice field enhancements, all things to keep the students safe and have good amenities. We are a 501(c)(3), so all of our donations are taxed exempt, and we are doing all this work with donations and grants. It's not tax money or district-funded. So the master plan, really the benefits to students were the increased practice time if we could get lights at that main field, even if they're only on for an hour, that gives, you know, potentially seven hours of additional practice and playtime. The, the practice field is regular grass, and in bad inclement weather, they can't play on it, snow. I think, I think there was, I want to say like almost 100 games that were, or practices that were moved because of the weather last year. I don't know if that's right, but it may be. I know it was quite a bit because we had a lot of heavy spring snows. And then the main field is turf, so it has a little bit more versatility. We also want to try to keep the students from driving down into town as much for games and practices, so that's one way of doing it, is to increase the amenities at the school. And the benefits to the community too would be that all the parents of the students are now visiting our local businesses up here instead of doing their, you know, shopping or their, their oil changes down in, you know, in Lakewood or Littleton. And so really keeping it a community, keeping our people, our residents, and our students in the community as much as they can. So our main goal is to get lights at the main field, hopefully this summer if we can raise the remaining funds. This is just an overview, and we have some information back at the booth if you have any specific questions. We've been working with an architect and an engineering firm on this master plan, and they also helped us with the engineering for this first phase, which has been a significant investment on the club's part at this point, financial and time-wise. We have worked extensively with them to pick lighting and specify light posts and technologies that are downcasting, that reduce spill, that are dark skies friendly, that are on timers so that, you know, immediately after practice is done or the game, the Friday night game is over, you know, they could turn the lights off as soon as people get safely out of the parking lot. And of course, we're also looking at, you know, pathway lighting and spectator lighting as well, because you can't just light the main field, and it can be a little dangerous at that point, so we have to make sure we've got traffic flow in and out. And so I just wanted to tell you a little bit about what we've done so far. We had the master plan that was agreed upon and designed by the district, the administration and club, and that was done about a year and a half ago. We have had public meetings with the adjacent property owners. The district supplied us with a list of people that we had to. And then we have the survey complete, and we've been working with contractors. So if you have more questions, let me know, we're looking for money. Of course, we're $176,000 raised and about $100,000 to go. Thank you.
And we are now so very honored to have Representative Sherri Jerome here with us. She's going to share a little bit about the legislature and legislature and what is going on there.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I want to give you a quick update on what's going on with the floods. You are probably aware, I don't know if any of you on this side were impacted by the floods, yes, no, maybe. Okay. You probably saw what happened in Evergreen. We also had issues in Kittredge. And then I've heard from, there are areas up in the northern part of House District 25, which is actually on the Jeffco Boulder border, so Coal Creek Canyon, north of Golden Gate Park, that area also had flooding. The state is responsible for the infrastructure, the bridges that they have constructed, and then the federal government will be coming in because it was declared as an emergency. The federal government will be giving us FEMA dollars for some of those projects. We don't know how much they'll be spending, and we don't know how much the feds are going to be giving based on, we have to do a needs assessment to find out just how many bridges were and roads were impacted. And then once we have that assessment done, then we're going to figure out what the building plan is. We have roughly $32 million in the table reserve, which is a pot of funds that we keep at the, at the state just to take care of issues such as this. Then we have $40 million in the reserve that we are constitutionally required, required to have a 4% reserve by, by the state constitution, but last year, because we had extra dollars, we bumped that another 1%, so that brought that up to, it's, it's 20 million, so, or excuse me, 40 million. So we've got roughly 72 million. We also have about 30 million more that we could get into and start digging in, further into the state budget. We hope not to do that. I did read today that if you have flood insurance and you had an issue, that you may be eligible for FEMA dollars. I don't have the details on that. I've been working with Udall and Bennett's offices on issues that I have with constituents that did have some severe flooding. Other than that, I've been touring prisons this summer. We, you may recall when I was chair of the Joint Budget Committee the year before last, I closed a prison, and we did because our prison population's been going down. Since that closure, there are about 400 more prisoners in the system than were in the system before the closure. I believe there could be an association with that number of prisoners with the assassination of Director Clements. May I recall it, Tom Clements was murdered outside his home last year, and he was the director of corrections. So we're not exactly sure what's happening with those populations, but we do know that we need to stay vigilant on it. This, we, one of the other things I did besides closing the prison that year was I commissioned a prison utilization study, which basically is studying the populations and determining where the different populations go. On Monday, I, we went through CSP, which is the Colorado State Penitentiary in Canyon City, and then CSP II, which is the prison that we closed. We are in negotiations with the federal government to rent out CSP II to the feds for either ICE individual, immigration individuals, or we're talking to the state of California to see if perhaps they might want to rent some prison cells to take care of their prisoners, some of theirs. In California, if the prisoner doesn't want to be sent out of state, they cannot send them out of state, so they would have to be volunteers if we want to come to Colorado. The good news about that is if we can utilize that space, it will save the state of Colorado $20 million. So basically, that's it. I'll be around. I appreciate your, your work here, everybody. You guys are always so fabulous. You probably saw that we did give some dollars out on the Lower North Fork, not enough, but we're still working on it. So thank you very much, and it's good to see you.
Thank you, Sherri. Okay, so we have an email list for everyone that would like to get information about the community. If you would like to be on that email list or not already, Susan Amy is at the back table, and she'll take, you know, she'll get your email address so that we can get you emails about things going on. And as you can tell, tonight, there's a lot going on. Let's see, there is a Rotary Recycle Roundup this Saturday, September 21st. There's information on one of the back tables about that. All the speakers will be available for you to come up and ask questions of and talk to in just about a minute. We have sheriff's deputies in the back, if you would like to ask questions of them, they have answers. School board candidates will be out in the lobby area, so please go and talk to them, find out as much as you can. The next Town Hall meeting is going to be November 20th. It is the week before Thanksgiving. And we, all donations that we receive tonight, if you'd like to donate, and there's a jar on the table over here, they will go to the local flood victims. So if you'd like to donate to that, we would really appreciate that. And last but not least, I'd like to thank again Sherri Trill with My Mountain Town for her support up to the meeting. Thank you, Sherri. Everybody's adjourned, so go talk to the speakers.